...for Tuesday, June 5th. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
It doesn't matter. I can switch over.
[laughing] Wait, am I in the wrong spot? I know, I have to look to see where I'm supposed to be sitting every time I come in.
I feel more important.
Wait, am I in the wrong spot? Oh, okay. I started it, sorry.
Sorry.
Okay, are there any audience comments for items that are not on the agenda this evening? Nope, seeing none, I will move down to business items. Business item A, public hearing for 2018 Comprehensive Plan Site Specific Amendments. I will open the public hearing. And I have Donna and Mike Williams. Donna and Mike Williams?
They can't hear you.
I think so.
Can you pull it closer to you?
Sure.
Is it on?
Yes.
Okay, can you hear me now? All right, Donna and Mike Williams? Come on up. I assume this is for the comp plan?
Pardon me?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we have three lots on Crawford, and we'd like to know...
Why, why you guys are trying to turn it back into residential? And, you know, what purpose there is of that? And how will that benefit us or the city?
Okay, Carrie, Nick?
Hi, I'm Carrie Sully. I'm the long-range planner with the city. And basically, what the city is trying to do is to acknowledge that the zoning out there, which is currently commercial, is non-conforming to the use on the properties. Everybody has, it's either vacant lot or an existing house. And because the zoning actually is commercial, that means that the residential use is non-conforming to the city zoning code. So, it makes it difficult for people who want to expand their home, they can't do it. It makes it difficult for people to get financing if they want to do some improvements, refi, or even buy, because the bank looks at that and sees a non-conforming property. They're not really sure. Some cities do what's called sunsetting, and after a number of years, if you have a non-conforming use, they make you stop using it for that purpose. We don't. But, and there's no intention to, but banks are leery of that kind of thing. And so, the feeling has been that because of the non-conforming zoning and the difficulties that some people have had with improving and maintaining their properties, if we rezonate back to residential, consistent with the uses that are there right now, it may make it easier for people who do want to improve the property, sell them without any kind of cloud on the zoning, and to kind of help people who want to, especially for the vacant property owners, because they can't build anything right now.
Right.
They can't do anything with their property, so that's kind of a bad thing for them. That may be huge, are your properties vacant?
We have two that are vacant, and the very house on the end on the left, which is okay house.
Okay.
So, I have a question. Out of all the property owners, how many property owning owners actually live there on Crawford?
Um, I would have to look at the mailing list of all the persons that I sent out the notice to, which is all the property owners and everyone within 300 feet. And I don't have that with me, so I can't tell you now, but I could look that up and...
So, I was given the impression there was only three that actually lived on the property. The rest of them are all rentals.
Mm-hmm, that wouldn't surprise me. I know that most of them are rentals or vacant.
Um, there's not a house on Crawford worth putting any money in.
Unless you have a bulldozer.
So, I mean, you're not...
Seriously.
Yeah. I don't think, by going residential, I think it won't make any difference. There's no one, there's no one that's going to put any money in property when that whole strip is looming, everybody's waiting for something to happen, waiting for Bethel to widen, and then businesses will come, unless we run more out of town like we did Home Depot, but...
I think where the city's trying to go with it is, right now, your options are very limited. If you do have property and you want to build something new, or you want to rebuild, or you want to expand, you can't do it. And so, for people who do want to continue the residential use, we're trying to actually make it possible, or at least more easy, for people to do that. And right now, we haven't heard of any interest from commercial developers. Each lot is very small. They basically have to buy up the whole street.
Buy the whole...
The access doesn't work for commercial. There's a lot that would have to happen there, and it wouldn't be lot-by-lot development.
No.
So, if in 10 or 15 years, something does happen, Bethel's widened, there's a big commercial interest, this prop, these properties can then be rezoned to commercial, if that makes economic sense at that time.
So, is there any way that, I don't know any of the owners of the property, other than one or two?
Robert Bacon owns the first two on each, or the first one on each site.
Okay.
He wants it to stay commercial.
We also would be interested in finding out any of the people, the owners, that are interested in fixing up their places.
I don't, you don't think you'll find any?
I mean, just as a investment for us, you know, we'd be interested in purchasing more of the property if people wanted to sell out, or, you know, so if, if you know of those people that are interested in doing that, we'd like to know who that is.
I have not received anything from anyone that talks about that specific issue.
So, where are you getting the idea that some people want to fix up their homes that it can't?
I think that that's been inquiries to the building department about permits to...
Well, yeah, and it's, a lot of this is being driven because we have a lot of code enforcement complaints. And so, when our code enforcement officer goes out and tries to work with homeowners or, or report, you know, notifies people that there's some sort of violation, the owners actually can't fix anything. And so, so code enforcement is the one who brought this to the city council's attention and said, "Hey, city council, you know, would you like us to take this to the planning commission for consideration?" Because right now, even if some, you know, the only option that somebody has is to tear down their, their house and stop using their property, or, you know, to ignore our code enforcement orders, and so, we're not really getting anywhere, and we don't have a good solution for people who have violations out there. The other issue is that that private road is actually a parcel of land, rather than a dedicated public road, or even a, a private road easement. And so, I think some of the lots have ownership interest in that, and some of them do not. And so, that's sort of a, just a general mess, I think, in terms of how those lots were originally created. And the only way to clean that up is going to be to buy all of them and extinguish those old interests and, and kind of consolidate that property. But, you know, given the demand for commercial real estate right now, which is really low, there's, there's no interest in doing anything of that sort right now. There's a lot of easier sites to develop that are going to happen before that one goes anywhere.
May I ask, anybody here have property on Crawford?
Yeah.
Are you interested in fixing your houses?
I think there are better ideas of looking at it differently.
Right.
And someone agree with the city when it's my turn?
Okay. So, were you a person interested in fixing up one of your houses?
Yeah, yeah. And I'll tell you why, and the social economics that I think are relevant to you.
Okay.
Okay. That's all we got, I guess.
Thank you.
We have three, and we vote.
Carrie, and Nick, I apologize if I may have jumped the gun. Would you like to speak to any of this before the public comment, or how would you like to do that?
Um, would you like an overview of the comp plan amendments and then continue the hearing? Or do, or would it be more helpful to hear anyone else who wants to speak and then kind of address their, their concerns in that context?
Sure, that sounds, that sounds good. Okay.
Yeah, and I, I would just recommend, I think everybody who's here is for Crawford Road only, correct? There's nobody here to testify on any of the other amendments?
We're, we're here for something else.
Okay, so, so I think we should maybe present each amendment, one by one, take testimony on that amendment, and then move on to the next amendment, so that we kind of aren't all over the place in terms of our testimony.
Okay.
Carrie, do you want to say anything else about the Crawford Road property? And then we'll take all the testimony on Crawford Road, and then we'll move on.
That works.
And are you, are you here for the Old Clifton Road one, or the, the Overlook Apartments one?
Or something different.
Is it called the Overlook?
Uh, the, that's the one up by the movie theater?
Orlando.
Yeah, yes. Okay. We'll, we'll take that one second.
Okay, so, back to Crawford for the moment. I, I think kind of in the explanation that I was trying to give the Williams, the reason for this, as Nick also explained, is that we have had a number of code enforcement issues out here where properties have become dilapidated, or in some cases are not even habitable anymore. And then we also have vacant properties that no one can build on, because the zoning does not allow the residential use as a conforming use. So, again, what we've been trying to do is at least open a door, make it possible for people who do want to come in and do improvements, maintain, build, to have that chance, which they don't have now. Right now, we're not seeing any interest from the commercial side for someone to come in and buy up all those properties, and nobody can do anything residential. So, people are kind of stuck. It's, there's no intention to make people do anything. There's no, there's no mandate here if, if the rezon goes through. But hopefully, at least, the people who are, you know, looking to do something with their property will have a chance they didn't have before. And hopefully, it will also make it easier for our code enforcement officer to work with people and just, you know, generally improve conditions in that neighborhood. It, it, it's kind of a spiral, you know, as property values decrease because the neighborhood is not being maintained, that doesn't, that encourages other people not to do that. So, we're kind of hoping to reverse that cycle in benefit of the neighborhood.
Carrie, question for you. You alluded to earlier reversing it back to commercial in the future. Might be helpful to know how easy or difficult it would be if a commercial interest did come along.
To rezonate again in the future?
If we proceed and make this residential...
It would be the same...
And then if there's somebody who comes along and says, "I want to build Kmart," how hard would it be to reverse it and make it back to a commercial zoned property?
It would be the same process as what is happening now. The city council considers amendments to the comprehensive plan once a year, and those can be initiated either by the city, which is what is happening now. It's the city and not the property owners initiating this amendment. But if one or a group of property owners wants to come in and say, "Hey, we think the time is ripe now for commercial use, we'd like the city to consider rezoning it back to commercial." It's the application, it's going through the same process, it'll be complete within the same year.
So, it's not particularly arduous or long-duration process to reverse it back to a commercial property if, if the group decided they wanted to make the area commercial?
Well, there's no guarantee that the city council would do it, just to put that out there. I mean, you can request anything, but the city council isn't mandated to do it. But no, it's, it's not difficult to request it and to go through the process, just like we're doing now. It's a public hearing, it's a report and a recommendation to council, and then council makes the final decision.
Okay, thank you.
Please. You can just state your name.
My name is Roger Minor.
Thank you.
I'm talking about 1690 Crawford Road. Basically, on the basic, what they're talking about for the city, I do agree. And some of this is definitely personal, and some I think is better for the city of Port Orchard in the long run, and the Crawford Road. And especially, as I said, I'd address to you, as the city says, I do believe as easy as they change it to commercial, which I truly would love it to be too, right? But the socioeconomics of Crawford Road, when you look at the little site map of how many little lots are up, everybody on that road isn't going to want to sell for the 50 or 60, 70,000 they might to have wanted to 10 years ago. Economics have changed to the area. That's nothing for a house now. Crap houses, and I hope I'm not hurting anybody's feelings, are 150, 110,000. So, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm really hoping they will reverse it, so I can put the money back into that house I, I need to, and at least get something out of it, and try to make this area better, believing that I believe, when it comes time to be commercial, that we'll be able to step in and do that, because it'll be best for us again. And right now, while it probably isn't best for you, at least it allows you on your one property where you have a house, if something did come up in the near future, you would be allowed to. Now, on my circumstance personally, it's that, now, there was a time when the neighborhood was very bad, and maybe meth or some, some drugs and some other things just weren't going right in the area. And, and my house got destroyed, basically. And the only way the police said that I could get these squatters out of my house immediately without kind of going through some of the eviction process and some of the other things, was condemn it, because they'd already taken my electrical panel and stripped basically the house apart. So, it wasn't livable. So, I did have my house condemned, but in all reality, it's quite rebuildable. And why, I don't want to have to throw that much money into it. The socioeconomics of the area, once again, show that if I do put the 40 to 50,000 in that house that I don't want to, it will be worth more than if I just sit there and do nothing. And, and I do agree, there's no commercial realm of who'd want to go through and buy all those little places versus the, you know, that great big lot next to us that's cheaper than all our places, and it's close to eight to 10 times bigger. And so, I, I hope you'll modify your opinion and say, "Let's let them go back, excuse me, to residential," with the, the promise that they put on something, that when it does become economically right, that we should all sell. Because I do believe, if most of Crawford Road was here, they would think that way, because they would like to get out of that rut.
Have you driven down there?
Yeah, I go down there about every week and check on my property. I'm the one that's fenced off in the front, and probably the worst on the whole, or second or first worst there. And I'd like to go in there, and, you know, my biggest concern is septic. You know, there's good water there, because we're on West Sound Water, but the septic that was there, it's, it was in good shape when the house was destroyed. That's my biggest worry, that I would want to know that, that people are going to accept my septic and let me then repair. And there's a lot of good people on that road that do live there, would like to see things improved.
I haven't met anybody.
Well, if, if they don't want to improve, they want to sell like you and I do, right? But you see, if you can't sell, what do you have to do? You have to think about improvement.
If you do want to sell, Robert Bacon, the guy that owns the first two, will buy it.
Yeah, but what's he going to pay for?
Here's, they rent for 450, 500 bucks.
Well, I, I wouldn't disagree on that point again.
But you can't, I mean, if you put 50,000, interrupt them.
Yeah, no, you're fine.
Get it to rent this way.
Well, I don't know how much you're in the rental business. I've been in the rental business for over 50 years. And a lot of it was because my father was in it, and I worked as a grunt for him up through it, and now I own rentals. And I've owned rentals in Canada, and I've owned rentals down here. And unfortunately, the socioeconomic position has just changed so immensely. Houses that are worth hardly anything are now worth something because of just...
Sir?
Sir?
If we may kind of pull this back into...
Sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. I wanted to address them, because I said I would, but I also understand. So, if there's anything I re, should reinstate, but I, I do hope you'll make it go back so we can, some of us who wish to can improve our places.
All right.
And I hope it's good for you folks in the future, because I want to agree with you immensely. I just can't because of the economic position of Port Orchard. Thank you.
Thank you.
One other thing, tiny houses, how much the city of Port Orchard has ever thought about those for some kind of these economic areas, whether they be, a lot of them are built on trailers, but whether you make a more, oh, mobile home, where they can be moved in the future if they had to be. Just something to think about, you know, I'm sure a lot of cities are. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the Crawford Road Amendment? No? All right. Do you care to jump into the Old Clifton Road Amendment, then?
Let's go to the, the Orlando Amendment, because there's somebody there for that.
The Overlook Amendment, yes. So, moving on to the Overlook Amendment, this, this particular amendment has been requested by Overlook Apartments phase two, the property owner. And they want to change the comp plan designation and zoning of several parcels, seven, that are part of their overall development site. What they're trying to do is to make it easier for them to actually develop the number of units that they were approved with Overlook Apartments. They do have a number of areas of the site that are sloped, difficult to grade and to build on, and so, what they're trying to do is to consolidate some of that approved density and move it on to the flatter parts of the site that are also more accessible. In order to do that, to take that density, they need to rezon these particular properties from residential medium with R-12 zoning to residential high with R-20 zoning. So, that allows them just to move the density. It's not giving them any additional units, it's not expanding the development area. And so, we, we support that as making it, it's a logical move that will just make the entire site more easy to develop.
Thank you. Would anyone care to speak to the Overlook Apartments Amendment? If you would just state your name, please.
I am Susan Daniel. We are adjacent property owners to this. And is there a, a map or something that shows where they're going to put the more dense housing?
I believe there is. Carrie, Nick, do we have a map?
I'm sorry.
Do we have a map that could be shared?
Yeah.
Old Clifton Road, and I got...
You want to go down to Old Clifton, or the...
No, 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 no.
Not, not Overlook?
Yeah, Overlook.
Okay, so, right here.
Is, right here is what?
It's these properties outlined in blue. This is Orlando. So, these are the properties associated with Overlook Apartments.
And, and what is the change? They're going to put more, more dense housing in some of these, or where, where are they going to put the more dense buildings?
Okay, so, Overlook actually extends on several of these parcels over here. And so, what they're trying to do is to allow increased density in these parcels over here and take some of what's approved from over here and build it here instead. But the density that would currently be allowed here under the R-12 zoning, 12 minutes per acre, that wouldn't allow them to do the higher, more dense apartments that they want to do. So, they're asking to have some of the density that was approved, the overall development on these parcels, moved over on these parcels.
And where is the traffic going to be? Wait, see where the word Wendell is? Are you looking at this map too? The question is here. Where, where the, the word Wendell is, those are our lots.
The three?
So, we have the adjacent property. So, we're just wondering where the road traffic's going.
Right.
How are you going to get to these?
I would assume it'd be on the top of the block, wouldn't it?
That, that, right there, it, you can see that's a dead-end road. Wendell is a dead-end road. We, we like to keep it that way if we could? So, that, those are my questions.
So, the previous development that was approved on this site, they had a residential subdivision, but I don't think the economics of the project penciled for them, which is why they wanted to switch to apartments. That was going to send traffic out on Harriet to Whittier. And with the apartment development, they would have to mitigate traffic impacts as part of that project and presumably improve those streets. But those are, those types of mitigations are determined at the time that you review the specific development proposal, not at the time that you do the rezon.
The dense housing, right.
Those are also partially county roads, and so, this is an area where the city portion of Harriet feeds into the county portion of Harriet, and then I believe, I can't remember if Whittier is city or county, but it's, I think it's right on the line. And so, we have to coordinate with the county for those road improvements.
Where's Harriet?
Where's Harriet?
Yeah.
Harriet is in between Orlando and Mile Hill. It's the, there's a little road, you can see it better up near Whittier and Holmes.
Oh, it's not labeled?
Yeah, it's not labeled on the aerial photo map.
Oh, okay.
Oh, right here.
So, it connects Russell to Whittier to Holmes?
So, it would go right, right by our corner of our property.
Yes.
Right there.
Yeah, that's, that's the most logical access because of the grade, and there is quite a bit of right-of-way that's available there. The road just has to be built. And right now, I think it's just a dirt driveway or, you know, gravel driveway at this point. Maybe there's some pavement closer to Whittier.
Sure, so it shouldn't attach to Wendell at all? Like Wendell could stay in it?
Wendell doesn't go through right now.
Right.
So, it really, I think by building apartments and by consolidating the development, they're going to have one central, you know, parking lot, whereas before, they were trying to put in a residential street that had to have connections where you could circulate.
Right.
But as long as they build a fire turnaround in that one parking lot, they should be in good shape in terms of fire codes and having fire access. And I think that was what led to those connections previously, was they needed to be, have two ways in and out for fire trucks.
Right.
Based on getting to some of those lots that were further down on a pretty narrow residential road.
So, where's the turnaround going to be?
They have to design it. We don't, you know, that'll be designed when they do their project. But, but presumably, it's on their site.
Okay, is, my understanding that this development was single-family homes, fairly upscale to start with, and that through conversations with the city of Port Orchard, it converted to more dense development, and they got a tax break for doing that?
The, it has not converted to more dense development. They've made an application to change the zoning from R-12 to R-20 to fit the type of project that they want to build, which is a, an apartment project. They are allowed to do apartments under the existing zoning, but it's to slightly different standards. But the tax break you're talking about, there's, there's a city, I don't think it's in the tax abatement area, actually.
Actually, it was in the newspaper.
Oh, are you talking about the opportunity zones? That's, that's a federal tax break. That's not something that the city has given.
Well, this was a city. It was my understanding, the city preferred that they went with higher density from the single-family homes that they started with about two years ago.
My belief is that that tax abatement applied to the apartments down below. I don't think it extends up the hill, but I'm going to check the map right now.
Okay, well, I, you know, I don't really care. We, we have more, more dense population coming in there. It's probably not a bad place to put it. I mean, we're not arguing with that. We're just worried about the street traffic, how that's going to go. And now that we got news that they're crunching the people in even tighter, closer to our duplexes, we have handicapped people who live in those duplexes, and we, we like to keep it quiet for them there, and it's a consideration. So, yeah. And it is a bluff. I mean, if they built on that bluff...
You, you are correct. This is in the multifamily tax abatement area, so they can get an eight-year deferral on property taxes related to the improvements that they build. But that doesn't have to do with whether it's R-12 or R-20. It has to do with them building multifamily housing, which is allowed under either zone.
Right, and initially, they were doing single-family homes.
Correct.
And so, they switched, and they get a tax breaks for doing that. Okay, all right. Do you have any questions? Okay.
Your names, please, for the record.
My name is Susan Daniel. Let me state your name.
Thank you. Would anybody else speak, care to speak to the Overlook Apartments Amendment? No? And Carrie, just to confirm, it says that the developer doesn't propose an increase in the total number of units, just because the density would be increasing, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
At this time, this is just the comprehensive plan designation and rezon. There's not going to be any change to be approved at all.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm going to see what the other gentleman who came in.
I'm here to talk about the combination of a business professional, totally use all of that, and propose it from the table.
So, the zoning code update, rather than the comp plan? Okay, that'll, that'll be a little bit later this evening.
It's coming up. Perfect.
We're also interested in the Old Clifton Road.
Okay.
All right.
Let's do it.
Let's do it.
This is the last of the three site specific amendments. This one is also sponsored by the city. We've been clear that the properties out here that are zoned for industrial use, it's pretty difficult for them to develop as soon as the, the progress that we're looking at, the area are split by creek. There's a deep hole there, which they would need to bridge, or otherwise find a way to travel from Old Clifton to the two of those parcels. And the likelihood of each parcel developing on a split basis, the smaller size as a result, seems unlikely. And there are two major property owners out there who haven't really been able to agree so far upon any type of mutual development or consolidating, selling, anything like that.
And so, we've had one property owner who has expressed interest in doing something different with his property, possibly developing it as townhomes or apartments on a site that's directly adjacent to Old Clifton. And so, we've brought forth that proposal so that all of those properties along Old Clifton can have that opportunity.
All right, thank you.
Quick point. You mentioned that it's, the ravine is Anderson Creek?
Yes.
When I looked at the Google Maps, if they're correct, it's not.
It's, I don't think it is. Anderson Creek goes through McCormick Village Park.
Right, and ends up going out to, like a Land and Gardens. This one runs down past the...
This might be Ross, or it comes out near Ross Point, I believe.
It's a feeder.
Yeah, by the deck, the swim deck restaurant. So, you may want to take Anderson out of there. Because there's a fairly good plot of land between those two creeks. There is a big culvert, but it's a different water.
Does anyone wish to speak to Old Clifton? All right. All right, I will close the pub... Yes?
You want to hear a presentation on the other items before you close it, in case anybody... I think we should present those before we close the hearing. The six-year street plan and the right-of-way plan.
Just to move this quickly, these are the non-site-specific amendments. These are the changes that are made to the comp plan on an annual basis to make sure that the chapters of the comprehensive plan and the documents that are incorporated by reference and the appendices to the plan are made up to date. And so, the items that have been incorporated here, you received an updated final right-of-way acquisition plan with Ethel and Sedgwick, that is up on the table. So, that was incorporated into the comp plan as a reference document. Our parks inventory and parks tolerance of the comp plan, we've updated to reflect Rockwell Park. Let's... We have updated the transportation improvement program to bring it up to date. So then, it's now going through 2026. And...
Carrie? It says 2025 on the...
25, excuse me.
Okay, that's all right.
So, I believe that's the last item on here. Yeah, Rockwell, yeah, the right-of-way acquisition plan. So, with these, we would bring comprehensive plan up to date for the following year.
Okay, thank you. Any more public comments on the comp plan? No? All right, seeing none, I will close then the public hearing for the 2018 comp plan site-specific amendments and open up the plan and commission for discussion.
So, Nick and Carrie, I have a question about the overlook apartments amendment. So, by changing the zoning, increasing it to R-20, is that... Okay, maybe I should have formulated my thoughts before I started speaking. So, I know that Ms. Daniel is very concerned about the traffic on her street, which I completely understand. Would the traffic be affected either way if it's R-12, R-20? Like basically, like they could do what they wanted to right now with R-12. They're just asking to make it denser so that they can build it in a smaller area up on the bluff, correct?
Well, I think concerning traffic, actually, if the more units that they build, the larger the traffic impact's going to be, however, the larger the mitigation is going to be. So, in terms of making those off-site improvements and improving Harriet and Whittier, and potentially even putting in turn lane or acceleration lane on Mile Hill or whatever might be needed to get vehicles in and out of this area, the bigger project is actually going to probably result in better improvements than the smaller project in terms of how much off-site improvement is made. If you were to do a single-family residential development there, you probably couldn't justify a complete street with sidewalks on both sides and curb and gutter, you know, from this project all the way out to Mile Hill. But with the number of units that come along with an apartment project, you're going to get a better, a better road project because of the proportionate impact of the project on the road network. So, I think you will get proportionate road impacts to the road improvements to, that are related to the impacts of the project, whatever that ends up being.
Okay. So, in your experience, could you see that they would possibly make Wendell no longer a dead-end street? Or do you think, like, based on the information that you have, that it would be more like Harriet and Whittier, and Wendell would pretty much be left alone?
I think that would be to be determined, but there would be a SEPA process, and so there would be a public outreach effort as part of the application. And if the neighbors did not want Wendell to connect, they could, you know, they could petition to make that so. But if you also have a nice new street, Harriet, they may say, wow, we would rather go out that way. It's going to be, you know, fewer potholes or a nicer road to drive on with better access to Mile Hill or Horsemen. And so, that's to be determined. But there's nothing that's requiring it to be opened.
Okay.
I can agree with that.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
So, it's not the end of that story?
Right, like there would be continued public hearings. Okay.
Yeah, that's good, so, yeah. Anything else?
Well, I was just going to give you instructions. I mean, if there is a desire to take these one by one and vote to recommend them individually, you can do that, or you can take them as a whole if you want to recommend the entire package. And so, that's really up to, you know, your discretion.
All right. How does the planning commission feel about that? Everything is...
Entire package?
I'd say entire package.
All right, do I have a motion?
I have a move that the planning commission recommend that the city council adopt the 2018 comprehensive plan amendments as presented.
One second? A second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to the public hearing for self-storage facilities ordinance. Would you care to speak? Yes, please.
So, the city council adopted a interim self-storage, interim ordinance to restrict the locations in which self-storage facilities can be constructed. That was done through the amended text in existing code and the adoption of the urban map that showed those areas in the vision form. And the purpose of this was to kind of contain where new self-storage facilities are going to go during the time that the planning department is working on a new zoning code. We anticipate that self-storage units will be adjusted in there with specific zones and some additional standards over what they have now. And so, the council wanted to make sure that we weren't getting additional self-storage facilities going in in areas where they kind of think that that's more appropriate for other types of commercial development. So, it's not a moratorium. It doesn't prevent self-storage facilities from going into the city, but it does temporarily restrict them to certain locations within the city. And when they passed this ordinance, they noticed that there was one thing that was in Exhibit to that ordinance that they wanted to change. And that was discussed in the staff report, that self-storage was listed as a, or it was listed as conditional use instead of a permitted use in the employment industrial and office zone. And council asked that that be changed so that it was a permitted outright use in that zone. And so, that's what was presented to you tonight, was a proposed revised ordinance language, or a proposed revised language statement to be attached to the revised ordinance. And so, what we're doing now is pulling the public hearing for those ordinance that was adopted, and also getting a recommendation on whether this change should be made.
All right, thank you. Are any members of the audience interested in speaking to this topic?
Can you carry some background about what happened in Polesbo and Bainbridge Island that made us react?
Yeah, go ahead.
Bainbridge actually adopted a pretty sweeping temporary moratorium on a lot of types of building. There are a lot of restrictions right now on lots under a certain size that don't have cer, that don't meet certain requirements for existing access and utilities. So, I think they're not trying to have a complete building moratorium out there, but they're trying to slow down development and concentrate it in those areas that are only currently served by urban services. And so, on Polesbo, I believe that their council sort of became a little upset that a lot of storage facilities were applying to go on 305 right at the entrance to the city and up near the Elhava area, where they really wanted that to be more gateway or showcase-type commercial. And so, they voted to do a temporary moratorium on that type of development. They have since passed new regulations for self-storage that is more restricted in which commercial areas it can go into. In fact, I think it restricts certain types only to the light industrial zone. But when Bainbridge and Polesbo both had these kind of semi-moratoriums, heavy restrictions going on, we started getting a lot more inquiries here about, you know, oh, hey, you know, Port Orchard, how about, you know, we're not going to build in Bainbridge, we're not going to build in Polesbo, how about here? And so, I think council wanted to kind of address this before it became a reality.
Yeah, and I'll add to that. I think a couple of other cities have taken this sort of action. I believe Shoreline and Federal Way have been either considered this or have considered this or have had this. And we've had a lot of pre-ops about storage units, whether it's vehicle and boat storage or RV storage or mini-storage-type units. And we have one project that's permitted and under construction right now at Lundberg and Bethel. We have another one that has been submitted and is under consideration near SR-16 where it crosses over Sydney. There's a property there. There's also a couple in the county in the UGA just outside of the city. And so, there's a whole lot of interest in building these things. And because they're relatively cost-effective to build, they generate good cash flow, they're rarely ever removed once they're established. And so, they really disrupt the ability of a neighborhood to develop as a neighborhood because you have a type of use that doesn't have a lot of activity surrounding it. And while it's a profitable thing, it employs people and generates a limited amount of property tax, it's not a sales tax generator, and it sort of can be in the way of other things happening. And so, we just want to make sure that, you know, there's a few areas where we feel comfortable having storage projects go forward, and we certainly didn't want to change some, pull the rug out from under somebody who is already in the process of permitting a project or building a project. But we did want to sort of put the brakes on it while we look at this a little bit more closely and come up with a better recommendation for what areas of the city should have storage and which ones maybe should be protected so that other things, more long-term, higher economic-type things can develop. We also mapped all of the existing facilities in the city. There's like four or five of them at Mile Hill. There's one on Bay Street. There's several on Bethel, both in the urban growth area to the south of Sedgwick. There's one kind of near Blueberry. And then, there's the one that's going in at Lundberg. It's really the west side of town that doesn't have a lot of storage units, which is why we left some of the area on Sydney there, because we figured there is some demand, probably from McCormick Woods residents and a lot of new people going into houses out there. Although, I don't know how much storage you need with 4,000 square feet, but anyway. So, we came up with a solution, and as we update the zoning code, we'll be addressing this issue permanently.
Great, thank you. All right, I will close the public hearing and open it up to the planning commission for discussion.
Well, I can say that I understand why the city wants to limit self-storage to certain areas, simply because they don't want it to be disruptive to planning efforts for local centers. And I get it, like, I wouldn't necessarily want like a self-storage in my area. But I also do understand not just that the, that the interest is coming because North KSAP is saying that we don't want this here. It's also, it has to do with our housing crisis. Like, our homeless people are coming in, and they are kicked out of their homes, they can't afford to keep them, and they're going to go live on the streets or go into a shelter, and they have to have a place to put their stuff. And I can tell you, there's a huge shortage right now of self-storage. Like, I have people coming in on a regular basis, asking me where they can find storage so they can put their stuff, so that hopefully, one day, when they are able to get housing again, they still have all of their household goods. So, I just feel like we need to make sure that we balance it with still allowing self-storage in areas and still encouraging them to come and build it with, we do want things to be beautiful and have nice local neighborhoods. So, I just, I'm still going to, I'm still going to recommend it, but I just definitely wanted to have people hear the, what I think the big driving factor between, behind self-storage right now is.
That's interesting.
I'm glad you brought that up because...
Huge, it's huge, I cannot tell you.
Wow.
And then, if somebody who, like, I had a guy whose car broke down in my parking lot, and he was in my parking lot for at least a month, and he didn't want it there, but he needed to have a place to take his stuff. And he had to wait until a self-storage unit came open before he could move all of his stuff into there, get all the stuff out of the car, and then get the car towed to a junkyard. But it took a while. And he was on foot, so he had to figure out how to get all his stuff to a storage unit, and anywhere that was walkable was already completely full.
So, the recommendation that we are seeking tonight is not whether to keep or remove the interim ordinance that has already been passed. It's really just one issue, and that's to change in the zoning table for outdoor vehicle storage, for outdoor self-storage, to make it permitted outright rather than needing a conditional use permit from the hearing examiner when it's in the industrial park. So, the only thing we're asking for is that recommendation. We think it makes sense in the industrial park, you know, vehicle storage in a construction yard or anything like that seems to fit out there. So, we thought that we should change that. And we do have one application for a condition, or for a permit to establish that use pending, but we realized it's a conditional use, and if we can change it, we can, you know, remove a pretty heavy burden in terms of cost to get that permit.
Gotcha, thanks for the clarification. Any other discussion? Excuse me. All right, then, do I have a motion?
I'll move that the planning commission recommend that the city council adopt the interim self-storage regulations with the revision to Exhibit A as shown.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, business item E.
So, for business item, is it E? It is E. We were actually going to suggest calling a short recess and to go over to the DCD conference room where we can have access to some technology.
Okay.
And we can sit around the table, and our audience can also come with us to that building. And that way, if we have, you know, we're just introducing the subject matter to you tonight, we're not voting on it, we're not holding a hearing. But as we go through things, if the planning commission has questions or if we want to make notes, we can actually type those in real time rather than, and making sure that we're kind of understanding things. So, I'd suggest calling a 10-minute recess and reconvene at 7:20, Prospect.
Should we...
Should we bring all of our stuff with us?
It's...
Yes, we can, we'll...
Or should we approve the minutes now and then do the...
I would approve the minutes now, and then we'll convene over there and adjourn from that location.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the May 1st minutes as written, or is there a need for a change?
I wasn't present.
I know. I'm looking. Okay.
Second? I second that.
All right, the May 1st, 2018 planning commission meeting minutes have been approved. And now, we will take a quick 10-minute recess and reconvene at, what is the address? 7:20?
Prospect.
7:20, Prospect.
Before we recess, I saw on the May minutes that we...
I know, I wish, I wish.
We tabled the approval of the March minutes until the next meeting. So, did we need to approve those at this meeting as well? Okay. Okay. Okay, because it's the May minutes that says that a quorum of planning commissioners who are present at the March meeting were not available, therefore, approval of the March minutes was tabled until the next meeting.
Yeah, that is true, that was true.
And I was at the March meeting, but I wasn't at the May meeting. But those are the minutes of the May meeting, saying that we didn't do it in March.
We didn't have a quorum, so we deferred it.
Okay. Okay.
At the next meeting?
Yeah. Okay. Yep. I'm all about procedure.
No, I know.
I bought a fake one last year. I wouldn't have to vacuum needles.
I assume it's at Point Prospect nearby?
Yes, just around the corner. Can't miss it.